Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to open tonight's Farmington School Board meeting. It is August 24, 6:30. Will you all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next on our agenda is public participation. We do have a call-in number with a PIN number that's listed on the site under Google Meet. If anybody has any immediate participation, please let me know, otherwise we'll leave it open throughout the meeting. First, we're going to start with some updates. First update we have is on a roof repair project. Ruth Ellen.
Yes, we were able to reach Mr. Greenhalgh, and he is able to do the oversight and management of that project for us.
Do we have an expected start date?
Well, they're talking about two to three weeks. Jeff is actually -- I put progressive in him together today to work out the specifics on the contract, which is what I make sure that we're all on the same page as far as the add-on and everything like that. So right now, it's pretty much I've handed it over to Jeff.
Okay. And you're going to be the one coordinating with him to make sure that if he's got any issues, he's going to contact you with Ellen?
Right, right.
Okay, good. So it should be started by, say, by the 17th, which would be three weeks out. And they're saying, what's the completion date on their quote?
Well, they say with both, you know, starting one, finishing it, probably 60 days.
Okay.
No more than 60 days. It all really depends on getting the equipment here on site, getting the necessary materials.
Okay. So I guess let us know when that is getting close to getting underway.
Yep.
Next, we have a Chromebook purchase update. Ruth Ellen, if you could speak to that. I know you sent an email.
I did. So with our Chromebook purchases, Mrs. Lauten and I contacted our current vendor to see where we were, where that kind of left us as far as delivery dates and what was possible. Our original order from this spring is supposed to be in in two to three weeks. That'll be 80 Chromebooks. That was the first section of our, for our STEM lab and the other pieces that we were hoping to get in for use in the spring. We do have an outside date on that for September 11th. They may actually be in sooner than that. We will know five days out exactly what the delivery date is. On our order from this summer, we have until September 18th to cancel that with no penalty if we're able to find them elsewhere. If we do find Chromebooks elsewhere, we can purchase warranties through Trinity, the same type of warranty that we currently have now. They average $85 apiece, depending upon what the particular configuration is of the device. The Google management software is $25 a Chromebook, and that's also fairly standard. They range between $20 and $35, depending upon where you purchase those. At this point, we have not found the numbers elsewhere. We did look to see what else, and I did include in the technology update for the board a couple of other vendors who had reached out. They're looking at 60 days through January. 60 days would be their earliest delivery point. November into January is what they're looking at for.
Now, the one I sent you from Newegg, they didn't have that inventory?
They didn't have full inventory. They had pieces of, they didn't have full. So we could certainly go back and look to see if we can get partial. If I had the 80 in that we have coming in a couple of weeks, we'll be good. We'll be good to start the school year.
So we don't need any past what we have coming in? You're sure?
It will give me enough to get at least a device to every family and then some. Does it mean that I have the most robust of our materials out to kids? No, it doesn't. What we're sending out are the ones that are looking to be replaced by some of the ones that are coming in.
Go ahead, Tim.
I apologize, I've been trying to get into the meeting and the computer wouldn't let me in. On the last agenda that we dealt with was the roof bids. They need to make a point of order. In reviewing the tape from the last meeting, it appears that I made the motion to approve the bids. You made a friendly motion, and I take your intent was to second it, but I never heard the second of the bid in the meeting, and I know it was the intent of the board to do that. So what I'd like to do is make a motion to reaffirm our vote, awarding the roof bid, so that it's clear on the record that we did, in fact, award it, so that there's not a problem down the line.
So you motioned to reaffirm it, but what was the friendly amendment, I guess?
The friendly, I recall the friendly amendment that you made was to check references or something along those lines.
Yeah, check references.
References came back fine.
And I think we went off on the discussion on the references and the availability of our contractor as well, and then we just got lost up in the discussion, never made a second, but I think that was your intent.
Right.
And it was a full vote on awarding the bid without a second. So I'd just like to reaffirm that for the record.
Sure. You made that motion to reaffirm?
I did.
No.
Yeah, he seconded it.
Okay, seconded, okay. Any discussion on the motion, which is to reaffirm the contract awarding with conditions? Not hearing any, all in favor? Aye.
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 unanimous.
Got it, thank you.
I guess my concern is, does it make sense if we can have, get some availabilities for some additional computers?
Certainly can.
In the short term, even if it's at a little bit more expense, to make sure that we're not short. I mean, I don't know what that number would be.
Okay.
Whether it's 20 units, 30 units, I mean.
I'll see if we can get another 20 or 30, absolutely.
You know, I think that the, like, the quote that I saw, I think that was, that I forward you from somebody that looked for me, I think that was an increased price of, I don't know how much that was, it was probably at least $50. So at this point, if we, say you're going to purchase some computers and you needed some additional funds, how much would you feel that would be? And do we need to authorize that for you to do that?
I would say it's probably wise to have you authorize me to do it.
And how much do you think that would be? $500, $6,000? I mean, because if you, say if you had to pay $100 per unit times 30 units, that's $3,000.
That's $3,000, right. And if I'm including the warranty plus the management software on top of that, that would take it more than just, because the $100 more that he's quoting for you is the device itself. It doesn't include the warranty and the management software, which is included in the price that we had.
Yes, I don't know, they're not saying you can't find a better price, but I wouldn't want you to say, to not have the ability to, especially with this is going against the grant, to say that, you know, we need another 20, 30 units, and if we get those ahead of time, and then we don't have a gap that we're waiting and somebody's in need. So I'll make a motion to authorize up to additional $5,000 for Chromebook purchase in the interim if needed to obtain those sooner than later. Is there a second?
No second.
Discussion?
And up to $5,000 would be within my purview to do, but I do appreciate the.
Yeah. Not hearing any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Yeah, the last thing I want to see is we're missing a few computers and we just, I'd rather have a few extra than a few short, especially if we could just subtract it off that PO.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I know you just took the vote, but this computer, for some reason, keeps not allowing me in the audio. Question I have on the laptops is, if we have a sufficient quantity for every student in our high school, and every student in our high school doesn't need a computer, why are we spending $5,000 more than not issuing the high school computers to people that need them? And when we get out what are in, issue them to the high school students that may not need them?
Well, and that's, right now, we've had several families, and I have this in my technology portion of the report, but I have several families who've reached out and said, "We don't need it right now, so go ahead and keep that, use it for somebody who does need it, and then, once we have devices for everyone, we will redeploy." That's why I'm fairly confident that we're going to be able to cover what we need to cover, but it never hurts to have a few extras in the background, just in case we have some technological issues.
So you're only planning to spend that money we just allocated, if you need to?
Well, if I can find them now, I'll have, and I'm able to get them in sooner than I can get the other ones right now, which are slated for, I believe, late October. If I can get them sooner than that, I certainly will. If it doesn't look like they're going to be any sooner or possibly later, then I'm not going to cancel an order that's already in process. So, Mr. Brown, because your voice didn't come in on that last, were you a yes on that vote, or was that a, I only had four?
I'm going to abstain at this point. I just wish that technological-wise, you know, I could have the opportunity to pop it and discuss it. So I'll abstain.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
Okay, moving next, COVID barriers and dividers update. I know you've put some information in the folder, but one thing we didn't see was a recommendation of what you were looking to purchase, so if you want to start with that in that folder.
Within that folder, my recommendation would be with AM lithography. Their shields are two inches shorter than some, although there's a couple of others that are in the folder that are actually 18 inches instead of the 22. These are 22 inches, side panels are 12 and 1/2. The price on these shields are, is quite a bit less than we've been able to find in other avenues, and they are still saying that if I can get something in as early as tomorrow, we still have a very good chance of having these for the first week of September. So.
And there's a photo down lower in that email.
There is a photo that shows you what that looks like, and I have measured 22 inches comes up. Now, if I have someone who is seven feet tall, it won't be high enough, but for the most part, it will be tall enough. And to be able to buy the barriers for less than $16 apiece as opposed to up to $71 apiece, you know, it's almost 20%. Some of the others that are similar in lower price that I didn't include here had, were much shorter and had limited visibility. They had a broad opaque band around the outside. They weren't completely opaque, but it really limited the sightlines for students, which I felt would be a problem. And many of those were only two-sided, so it would be front and one side, which limits then movement around the classroom. So I didn't include those.
Mr. Chairman, with the superintendent's recommendation, what is the cost for what we need for a district?
So what we would need for the district would be to include for student desks and staff desks.
Would be the 900 units?
Would be the 900 units, which is $11,700. And then the feet for those would be an additional $2.24 each for 2016 for the 900 quantity. I'm also looking to order an additional 100 feet, which would give me, for 25 shields, for pieces that we're having custom cut, so that would be an additional $224. But that allows us to get those custom pieces put in the same way.
And those going, that extra footage going to work with the shields that we're getting from Granite State Glass, which are 3/16 thick?
That's a good question. I may need to go back and double check.
Because if it goes in a, if it goes in.
Right, a slot, the slot may not be wide enough.
It's not going to work.
Okay, so.
So I would.
I'll hold off on that.
Well, I would just, I mean, you can, we can authorize up to that, and then you can, but I don't know if those are going to be able to be used. I don't see a picture of them, but.
They are.
They may be single-sided, and they may work.
They're, it's kind of cut this way with a channel in it. It's chamfered, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, going back to my question, can we get a total number of, how to exceed so we can make a motion to get these ordered?
So you have 13,716 without the extra?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion, and if there isn't a superintendent, to spend up to $14,000 for what she feels to be appropriate shields for our classroom?
We have a motion. Do we have to second it by?
Josh, I believe.
Josh. Any discussion? And this is, the discussion is this will provide for the students and the teachers on their desk?
Yes.
And this is what we're providing for the teachers? Or we're providing additional stuff also?
This would be for the teachers' desks and also one for each of the secretary's desks as well.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
Will we open the order these tomorrow, this week?
You betcha.
Thank you.
In fact, a penny.
Just as part, just as part of the discussion, I just want to be clear that this money is coming out of these federal funds that we've received for the reopening, correct?
Yes, it is.
Which funds?
It will be, it will be charged to the CARES Act.
The CARES Act, okay.
Yes.
Any other discussion or questions? Not hearing any, all in favor? Aye.
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 So, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
With that out of the way, can I ask if there's any unfinished business within the state reopening plan that, without these shields, has not been completed?
Do we prefer current virus protection? Or screening?
As far as the standards that the state guidelines give, having ordered the shields, which isn't in there, is there any other aspect of those state guidelines which is a district we have not met?
Well, in the computer labs, these are not going to be used in the computer labs. It's going to be the, or in the chemistry labs, it's going to be the additional pieces that have been ordered from Granite State Glass. And they're going to cut those for us. I got them to do that today, because Larry had issued a PO for that material, I don't know, maybe last week?
Friday.
Okay.
Okay.
And those are slated to be in this week, yeah.
But just to clarify, the plexiglass shields that were wired is in our reopening plan and not the state guidelines that was issued by the state task force, correct?
Yes, yes.
They are, yes. They're suggested, but they're not required, yes.
Do we have any requirements under the state reopening plan that we have not met? To yes or no?
No, materials have been ordered, they are not all in yet.
So that's, you're referring to masks, sanitizers?
Masks, right.
What else are there to be? PPE, nurses?
Goggles, PPE, gowns. We've, we have those on order. Estimated delivery should be before school, but I don't have them in-house yet. I do have cloth masks for students. I have disposable masks. We do have sufficient gloves. I have sanitizer to begin the year, although we'll need to continue to order. Gowns, goggles, shields, and N95 masks for nurses are still en route.
So the disposable mask for the students, what is the quantity we have in-house, and how long is that expected to last?
Disposable masks we have in-house will probably not last more than a few weeks. We're ordering some more. I do have cloth masks. I can give one to every student now. Those are washable, they're reusable, those were provided by the state. Potentially more than one mask if I have students who, say, I've already got mine.
Good, just a question. Go ahead, Tim.
Mr. Chair, oh, sorry, is Mr. Brown on the floor?
Yeah, I interrupted him, so I just.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown, go ahead. Yeah, so what I'm hearing from the state guidelines is, we have some masks in, but we only have masks that are going to carry us for a certain, like, the time, but we expect the rest in by school start. Am I hearing that correctly on that hard time here?
Yes, we have, we have ordered additional masks, and we will need to continue to order throughout the school year because we're unable to get them in mass quantities. I can't order 20,00, you know, 20,000 masks right now.
Okay, and on the N95 for the nurses, when do we expect those in?
I'm, I'm hoping that we're going to have them by September 1.
Okay.
And they're back September 9?
Well, the nurses, yes, students are here September 9, yes. Staff are in the 31st.
So I guess my question is, if we're meeting the state guidelines, which we have some masks in, the N95s are available locally, I could get them tomorrow and pick them up, I buy those, then why are we not following the governor's executive order on our reopening?
Following the order such as timeline or conditions?
Well, conditions, I mean, what the governor's order says, in the second-to-last paragraph, "The Hampshire schools shall retain the flexibility to provide traditional in-person instruction, distant learning, or hybrid instruction that encompasses aspects of both in-person and distant learning in order to respond to COVID-19. It is imperative, however, that schools will operate using in-person instruction, to the extent possible, based on the factors set forward within the guidance." So for meeting the state guidelines, the way I read the governor's order is we're expected to open in person.
And, Mr. Chair, may I jump in?
Go ahead.
I'm slightly confused, because when the task force put forth the option two, excuse me, three, which was a hybrid option, I thought we were told that we didn't think we could have these things in place to open under the hybrid, which is why I voted to go remote. But it sounds like these things can be in place.
If these shields come in on time, we're going to be a lot closer. I have been told, first week of September, I'm hoping they can do that. Either way, we're going to have students in, because with small groups in and students who are in need, we're looking at having, you know, at least 30% of our students in in some respect for some type of in-person instruction.
So at this point, we're not positive, but we may be able to have everything in-house before then, but inconsiderate reopening earlier than our original date that we set at this point. I mean, I don't know if people want to, you know, I know there was a motion last week to open at the start of school, and we may be closer now than we felt we were last week, but I don't know if we're at that point. That's just my discussion.
Well, you know, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
With that, with that in perspective, I think I'm going to make a motion that we go back with option four, start school with restrictions on the date that we set, which I believe is, what, September 9? Is it September 9?
Yes.
That's my motion.
Second.
So the motion is second, that's to open to level four, which is fully in with restrictions, fire is masked and so forth.
Go ahead, discussion?
Go ahead.
Mr. Shiden, would you accept a friendly amendment? And my concern is, is there's two aspects to the community. There's an aspect that wants their children back at school, and there's an aspect of supporting remote. So with that planned, can we also offer a remote, like, choice?
I'll accept that amendment. I'd like to hear from the superintendent about that option.
Isn't that already current in our reopening plan, level four?
It is in the reopening plan.
Okay, well, go ahead, Ruth Ellen.
I'm curious as to what it is you're looking for, Mr. Shiden.
Well, as Mr. Brown just pointed out, we have a contingency, and again, I'm just going to put that out there. I mean, I'm not sticking my finger up in the air and seeing which way the wind blows, okay? I'm trying to make decisions based on information we have. The information we had a few weeks ago was that we didn't think we could get all this into place, and now, as things are transpiring here, it sounds like we could get these things into place to go back to, with an option four, in attendance with restriction. So I get that we made a decision a few weeks ago, but the information that we now have, and I was under the assumption, and maybe this was just my own assumption, and I don't know where, I thought I heard that the governor had made the mandate that the plexiglass and dividers be in place, and Mr. Brown pointed out tonight that that's not filed at the executive order. I mean, it sounds like we've got all the things in line, should all this stuff show up, that we have to open. It sounds like the governor is saying, "If you've done all this, you're expected to open." So Mr. Brown is pointing out, it sounds like, correct me if I'm wrong, that there is a contingency of parents that may not feel safe with that, and that they have, that they're able to have with our instructors, with our teachers, a remote option, some type of remote instruction. Is that something we can pull off?
I believe it is. It's something that we've planned to do, and one of the things that we'll need to look at is whether we have, say, with the numbers, is it a teacher or grade level who does a remote classroom, or is it that we have students promoting into regular classrooms? And we'll have to look to see how many staff members I have who are requiring under ADA some type of accommodation. We can talk about that later.
When you decide, when we decide to go with a remote model, and there are students that just don't do well with remote, there is no other option for them, okay? But if we go with the in-house model, which it sounds like we'll have all the precautionary measures in place by then, if we go with the in-house model, and the people who don't feel safe with the in-house model will have an option, as opposed to the parents who didn't have one, if we didn't go with the in-house model, they'll have a remote option.
So I just want to jump in, because there's things in the chat that you might want to hear. Is that okay?
Now, wait a minute. We have public input. Please ask the chair if you can jump in.
No, not at this point.
Are you going to ask?
Not at this point, Jen. We're going to have the discussion.
That's Misty.
I just wanted to let you know there's chat.
That's Misty.
Oh, sorry, Misty, sorry.
Yep.
Not at this point. I'm going to finish the discussion with the board. I guess one point in the discussion, if this motion passes, what if we do if we don't have the shields in place by the 9? I mean, are we going to need to have this contingent upon confirmation, contingent upon that we're going to have those materials in place by, say, Friday the 4th? Because that would be, the 9th is a Wednesday, or, say, the Monday, the 7th?
Monday, the 7th is Labor Day.
Oh, okay, sorry. So, but we would need to confirm that those materials are going to be in-house.
Right.
Because without those shields, by the delivery, expected delivery date, we won't have those additional precautions in place for the 9.
Right.
And if, and if they're not, then we can discuss on whether we're going to push the start date of school out a week while those come in.
So.
The shields themselves, the plexiglass shields, that I agree with buying for the safety issue, are not a requirement that I can see in the state guidelines. If they're in the state guidelines, feel free to point them out.
No, I believe you're correct. These are additional precautions that are part of our opening plan.
Because we're not going to be able to maintain six feet in the classrooms.
So where are the, where are the state guidelines? Does it say we have to meet six feet? I'm reading in the state guidelines that it says, "We have to social distance up to three feet when possible." So am I reading a different document?
You are not. CDC says six feet. You are correct.
I would say a contingent upon meeting the state requirements, not anything else.
I just want to add here that I don't care how many shields we have or how many masks we have, we have one variable we have no control over, and that's the kids themselves. There's no guarantee the kids are going to stay behind the shield, there's no guarantee the kids are going to stay three feet apart, let alone five feet apart. There's no guarantee that they're going to keep their masks on. So we don't have everything under control until you're asking for trouble by having kids come in here. Studies just show that kids have a high viral load where they're infected, and we have no control over where the kids go when they leave the building, or over the weekend, and who they come in contact with, and what's going to happen. We're just asking for trouble by changing our minds constantly about what we're going to do. It's mostly about safety, not about what the governor says, not about what the CDC says, about keeping kids safe.
What about the Commissioner of Education? Does it matter what he says?
What about single unemployed parents, or employed parents that can't go to work?
So.
Everybody has options, that's all I'm saying. Do what you want to do, but I'm just saying, I'm going to vote on the side of safety. You can vote for whoever you want, that's the way it goes.
Now.
Chairman, can I get my answer to a question? What about the Commissioner of Education? Does it matter what he says?
Who are you asking?
Stan said it doesn't matter what the governor says. How about the Commissioner of Education?
Well, does it matter? The governor's directive says we have the flexibility, it's the school board's choice. So we're making a choice.
That's not what the director says. That's not what the director says.
That's what you just read to us. But that's.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, the one thing I want to add, part of this discussion, is I had Ruth Ellen check with James Reinhardt, which is the emergency management director, and I believe he had said that he wasn't aware of any new cases, but the state did update their website today, later in the day for today, and they show one additional case in Farmington.
I met with him at 1:30 today. We have a standing Monday meeting now to make sure that we're on the same page. And at the time that we met, he'd not received any word. It's possible that he did after we spoke, but at this point, he's only going to contact me if it's school-related.
Right. So I don't know if you guys were aware of that. I've been trying to keep tabs on it on a daily basis. I noticed it wasn't updated earlier. Not saying that that's accurate, but it should be considered accurate.
And I know that Vermont is using 400 per million or so, kind of as their rule of thumb. New Hampshire hasn't established that guideline. With one, we're well under that. Three tips us just over that ratio.
Three.
Three cases in Farmington tips us over the 400 per million ratio that Vermont has been using as their kind of standard of this is more lockdown than that is. Once it goes beyond, once it's below 400 per million, they will say, this county is no longer on a quarantine list. You're able to travel.
Now, also part of this discussion, I had you reach out to surrounding communities around us and try to figure out what their reopening plans are. I know you just got those in the folder. What is the towns and our immediate surrounding towns that are opening fully with restrictions? Or, I mean.
Fully with restrictions, I believe it's Barrington, Wakefield, and Rochester. Hybrid is Governor Wentworth, Milton, Dover's remote.
I believe it is hybrid.
And what are those?
Well, they're part of Oyster River.
And those hybrids are like 50% in, 50% out, or?
It's two days in, three days remote, swapping kids back and forth, either morning or afternoon split, or it's two days with a day remote in between.
And Governor Wentworth is inviting our vogue kids to attend?
Yes, they are. We will have, our Level 2 students would be in-person five days for their block certification classes. The other students would be not as frequent, not for as long, but they're still looking at at least a couple of days, if not five days a week, depending upon the program. And because we have a lesser number of students that are involved there, we will look to work with them around what they need to do. So we'll get them to vogue, and then we'll make sure that they get what they need to for their academics on this end. We'll accommodate.
Any other discussion on the motion? Going once, going twice? All those in favor, and the motion is to reopen with restrictions on our Level 4 of our reopening plan on September 9? That's the motion, correct?
A friendly amendment with a remote by choice.
Who's the question that I'm listening to, or the remote by choice?
The remote by choice is included in the plan as it stands in the reopening plan.
But even so, that was accepted?
Yeah.
Accepted friendly amendment, yeah. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Stand opposed. Okay, moving along to reports.
So we've kind of covered the first one, COVID levels, emergency management contact. I do have a weekly meeting with Chief Reinhardt now that is set for Mondays. When we spoke today, there were no new cases. There was one more that's been identified by the state later this afternoon.
Are you going to touch base with him tomorrow on that?
I will. And if it's at all school-related, he will be contacting me. What I, we're both finding frustrating is that the numbers that he's been contacted about don't necessarily match the numbers that are up in the state portal as far as what's being reported. And so it makes it very difficult to say we have data on which we can make a strong decision because it doesn't necessarily match what's out there. He's not been contacted about as many cases as there are posted on the state website.
Okay. So moving along, under building logistics.
And we've covered this pretty much with the barriers and those other pieces that we were going to need to be talking about, so.
Professional development.
Professional development. I've included in your packet the district professional development that is scheduled for the fall, including what is listed for the week of the 31st when we are meeting with teachers. The required trainings that are starred are ones that we have available to us through Primax. These are annual trainings that have to be recertified each year for staff members.
Okay.
The other piece that I would like to put along with professional development, I've included in your folders, an invoice or a quote from Maine Cohort, Maine Cohort for Collaborative Learning, I believe.
Customized learning.
Customized learning, thank you. This is a group out of Maine that has been doing proficiency and competency-based learning for several years now. They have a wealth of information that is available for staff, not only as individualized pieces that are available to them asynchronously, but also webinars and trainings that they can go to both online and in-person. The price for that is just over our threshold. It's $5,374.86 for a district membership that will give all of our teachers access to their trainings for the year. This is able to be paid through Title 2A, but because it does exceed the $5,000 threshold, I am asking the board for authorization to do that.
I also just want to add, Ruth Ellen, that that also gives us access to all the already built learning progression curriculum structures for all content areas.
So that's huge.
As well as complex reasoning and habits of mind. It's a huge resource. So beyond the professional development, we have access to that as a model, which will be super helpful for us in that work.
Any questions or discussion regarding that, this? I'll make a motion to authorize the purchase for the premium membership from MCCL membership structure. No, MCCL.
Okay, premium, thank you.
Premium.
Second.
Second. I think it was second by Stan initially, right?
I think so.
Discussion?
I just have a quick question. I have no problem spending the money, I think it's a good idea. How do we evaluate this over a course of a year, it's affected with our staff? So what I'd like to do along with that motion, I'd argue with the discussion, is say, you know, let's roll this program out for a year, like, no problem spending the $5,000. But at the end of the year, I'd like to see, you know, what is the impact of this training? Was it worth it? Is it, was it not? You know, et cetera. And I'll trust Misty that this is her specialty, this is what she's recommended, I'm going to vote for it. But how do we, how do we know our staff is going to benefit from it, I guess, is kind of where I'm at?
So, Tim, because per requirements of the grant, I have to collect that data, I have to collect survey data, reflection data from all PD, evaluation data from the staff, and that all is backup for the grant funding. So because it's in the grant, that's a requirement by design.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. Next we have is transportation.
I do not have a full transportation report this evening. What I can tell you is that if we are, this may be the one area where coming back in person is something that we really need to look at. If we are coming back with the model that we had a little bit ago, we have sufficient buses and drivers right now to cover.
So at this point, you need, this is something you need to move up your list.
Absolutely. We're going to need.
Having a plan and addressing this for our next meeting.
Yes. I am starting to get back survey data now on beginning of school plans, and will be getting a sense of how many people are needing transportation. Back about a month and a half ago, we were hearing that probably only 25 to 30% of district would absolutely require transportation. If that remains the case, we're probably fine. If it does not remain the case, then we're going to have some serious scrambling to do. So Lynn and I will get with that this week.
Can I bring in a question, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Tim.
We're delivering two modes of education with a parental choice that's in-school and remote. If we cannot effectively provide transportation, and I know we won't have that answer until next week, would it preclude the board from saying, you have a remote option, we're not providing transportation, parents are going to have to find their way in?
We are required to provide transportation for special education, and we are required to provide transportation as needed for those under the age of 14.
So I guess we would have to make sure we address that concern first, that we can fully address that.
Right.
At a minimum. And if not, then that's a higher priority than high school students.
The other piece that could be addressed, and I'm not recommending this until I get a chance to see what our numbers are, currently our walking radius around the school is a mile and a half. State law allows for two miles. I'm certainly not recommending that we back that up another half mile, but state law would allow it. So I'm just putting that out there to let you know where that is.
Well, that's something I really wouldn't be in favor of either.
Okay, so.
But I'm just one member.
I will, I will look at the options available.
This is New England, it's not all flat-going.
No.
And weather is not always nice.
Correct.
Can we get an opinion from legal, that if we're offering a remote option to parents, then do we have to provide transportation if they're receiving their education remotely? They're getting the same education as we are in the classroom. So at one point, does the transportation kick in, you know, if parents can't provide? And it may be a non-issue for surveys, I mean, 85% of people that said they were going to drive, it may be a non-issue. But I guess my question is, when the data is in, or the refreshed data is in, you know, do we have to provide transportation if we're providing a remote piece of education?
I would say.
I don't think that's ever been addressed before.
Well, and we haven't necessarily been in this position before. I will say that one thing we may need to look at is if the issue is you have two parents who work, they need their students to be here but aren't able to drop them off, to say that we're providing a remote option, having just said that our big reason for coming in person is so that those people can go to work, we may be kind of using circular reasoning.
So can we get a legal opinion or not?
I would like to, just make sure she responds in writing.
Absolutely, she always does.
And then forward it to, well, put it in a sensitive folder for the board.
Okay. Did you want to do a vote on looking for the legal opinion?
Is that a motion, Tim?
I'll put that in a motion, we get an opinion from legal if we mandate advice by transportation if we have a remote option available. Sorry.
Any discussion? I guess I just want to clarify that if we are, they may be for different classes, whether it's, it may be a requirement, feels it's a requirement for special ed, it may not be when it's not a special ed student. So there might be two answers.
Right.
I just want to make sure the question, it kind of gets the answer.
Encompasses all.
Yeah, encompasses both of those questions.
Okay.
Questions or discussion?
Can I, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Sorry, can I rehear that motion?
Tim?
I'd like to get an opinion from legal.
Yeah.
If we're required to provide student transportation if we have a remote option available to families that can't transport their kids. Obviously, my attempt would be to provide transportation to everybody, but if we can't do it, then are we required to do it if we have that remote option as a last resort?
Any other discussion or questions on the motion? Not hearing any. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I say aye.
I'm going to vote no.
Stand opposed.
Some lawyers are smarter than us.
Next we have on the reports is food service.
I spoke with our food service company today. We have a new food service director, her name is Tanya Dominguez. Today was her first day with us, so.
I guess you're going to need to have a conversation with her tomorrow about changing plans.
Yes, I am, I am. What I have put in the folder is the initial pieces. It certainly will shift a few things, not the least of which will be the remote meals options that are in there. But one of the things that I do want to make sure that we get out in as many different venues as possible, and I've sent it out in our back-to-school packet, and I will state it here, I need to make sure that families are aware of the fact that whatever your free and reduced lunch certification was last fall, or last spring, does carry forward into the fall, but it expires on September 30. And so on October 1. And so on October 1, all meals revert to full-paid meals unless there is a new qualifying application that is done. So anyone who needs that application in paper form, who needs help filling that out, those are available at the SOU office. They're also available at the schools. And we'll make sure that you get what you need. I strongly suspect that we have more people now as a result of some economic issues this spring and summer that are going to be qualifying for these services, and I want to make sure that those who need it have access to that. But the, the point where the coach becomes a pumpkin is September 30th. So if you have direct certification, you need to make sure that the direct certification number that you provide to us is identified as whether it's, you know, which, which type of number it is, and a Medicaid number doesn't give us that direct cert. So make sure that that is circled on the form. You can't just put a number in and let us guess which one, because they're all nine-digit numbers.
We have, do we have a policy of reaching out?
Yes, we do.
To all the population? And when is that done typically?
It's done usually through the back-to-school packet, which went out today. Usually those go out the first day of school, but we've done that ahead of time. I've sent out an email. We will send out additional emails through our mealtime system. We will be sending out additional reminders through both email and phone that this needs to be done. But once a week or so, we'll be reminding folks, this is coming up, and if you need help, we'll help you with it.
So they'll have at least three, three or four reminders?
Yes.
Before the 30th?
Yes.
Can I add into that if anybody needs help filling out that paperwork, they can always call the district. We're willing to help them out, fill it out.
Absolutely.
Because that's, can be a challenge for some people. So if they want to come up to the office, we'll be able to help them out with that as well.
We, we have folks there that will sit down and walk them through it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
This is on the school lunch and kind of the busing issue. As the district prepares a transportation plan, can we advise the board if there's going to be any type of need appropriation out of federal money for possibly overtime to deliver meals? So if we get meals, you know, if our transportation system is maxed, add to that, we have to deliver meals potentially for those be delivered after the workday on overtime. So as they're doing that assessment on both remote and how many remote would need meals, uh, transportation, that would be a good, good area to look at so we can appropriate the money as needed.
And, and delivery of meals would be for those who are remote, we'll have to look at our numbers. The one other difference from this fall to last spring is the fact that our seamless summer option and area certification does not follow through. So in the spring, all students were classified as free. This fall, it will be whatever their classification was prior to March 13th. That will continue, and then wherever they are set, so if it's a free student, it's free. If it's a reduced price, then it will be at a reduced price. If it's a full paid, it will be full paid. Now, we can still deliver meals. Those can be paid through mealtime, but it's not free just for anyone who signs up, and there will need to be a registration for that. Those will be going out in the next week or so.
Okay. I'd just like to know, as you guys develop your plans, I'd just like to hear your look at.
Absolutely.
Regardless of how they're being paid, so that gets to be a set.
So one of the things that we did send out and will have to amend, because we had voted that that was, we were six weeks, we will need to, it said, when we come back, will you be looking to be in person or remote? The date would change if we're looking at everyone being in person on the 9th.
It has changed.
Yes. Well, the date will change for what they are filling out. Okay.
So moving to staffing, not sure what was encompassed in this, but...
Just, you had asked for an update of how many requests for accommodations we had and where things were. I can give you general numbers now, and I know the board was looking at wanting to discuss accommodations. I cannot give you names or issues with staff. I can tell you this many staff are looking for childcare accommodations. This many staff have good...
So, but isn't some of that discussion going to fall into personnel?
It likely will. But even, even at that, even under that, I can't, even in non-public, I can't give you those names or pieces.
That's understandable. I guess, I'd like to start a little bit different spot. I know it came up at the last meeting regarding janitorial services. So could we touch on that first?
Sure.
Because I think there was a need or concern that were brought forth, are we going to be adequate? Or has there been a plan of a discussion of that? And if we're going to start open on the 9th, and next week you're going to have potential opening up some sports, or all of them will be back before us? I mean, has this, has there been consideration for this? And where do we feel we are with staffing levels for...
Well, you had asked me to bring that to you for next week.
Okay.
But what I can tell you is that I, I do have a nomination for custodian tonight, so we can, so that...
Is that filling a position?
That's filling an open position. So that's helpful. What it doesn't do is if we're full back in, we won't have the kind of the ramp up that we would have had if we were, have about 30% in to kind of get a good feel for how long is this actually taking with kids in the building? If we're going to start full in, then we certainly need to look at things a little differently, and we will be doing that starting first thing in the morning.
Can I just add a comment to that conversation?
Go ahead, Tim.
If janitorial staffing is a concern, again, we have federal money, that if we have to hire a cleaning company, we can do that on a temporary basis to make sure that our schools are clean and safe. And as Larry's doing his plan on what he needs for resources, if he needs those resources, I'd like that to be brought to the attention of the board so we can act on it sooner than later.
Right. Or I think the other option is temporary services? Maybe we can do that through temporary agency?
We need to look at it because we also have a CBA we need to be careful with. So...
But we're, yeah, but we're in a tight position, so we need to add additional staff.
Correct.
That can be paid through by the grant.
Well, the other thing that, the other thing Larry can offer is that budget on overtime. We may have staffing that says, yeah, I can't get this done in, in 40 hours in a week, but if you're going to pay me $10 an overtime per week, yeah, I think we're going to accomplish that. And that would probably be the least inexpensive way out. But I think, I think Larry has to come to us and say, these are my, this is where I'm okay, these are my shortfalls, these are where I need help, so we can get him to help.
So, so what you're saying is, there's, I would say there's three modes to get that help. Additional overtime that will be paid through the grant, additional people that will be paid through the grant, or outside services being paid through the grant.
I, I would pay everything through the grant because it's, that's certainly what requires to do, but I can't say what we can pay for through the grant until I kind of know what Larry's piece of, does that make sense?
Well, I, I think what Charlie was trying to say, we're either looking at overtime, more people, or an outside service, and...
On top of what our standard workload is.
Right.
Because if it's on top of our standard workload, then we can charge a grant. If it's not, we can't, right?
Correct. Correct.
I can hear the superintendent real clear. It's very difficult to hear, and hear the chairman. I, I, I've got the translation. Thank you.
Okay. I, I'm sitting right next to the computer, so that's the difference.
So getting back to the staffing, you said you had some rough numbers regarding staff that was looking for accommodations?
At this point, I have paperwork from 25 staff members asking for some type of accommodation.
And the three areas would be?
The areas are either in the area of childcare, either their own health issues, or the health issues of a family member for which they have primary care.
Anybody have any questions regarding those numbers? I think we're going to need to go into non-public and some of the detailed discussions, but I want to get as much as we can, hold in public as possible. So that's for all three schools?
That's for all three schools. And I do have four more who've told me that they're waiting for physician's paperwork. It's not in yet. I don't have it. A few who've told me that they're waiting for physician's paperwork, it's come in, and their physician said, wear a mask, you're good to go back. So waiting doesn't necessarily mean...
If you were to break that down, how many would be in the childcare?
Right now, seven of those are.
And how many for personal health issues?
Nine.
And how many have health issues of others?
Four.
Okay, we're missing something.
Mr. Chairman?
That doesn't add up to 25, Ruth.
Sorry. Hang on.
Go ahead, Tim. She's checking her math.
Yeah, two things. One, I'm bothered by the fact that the board is the appointing authority, in as a matter of policy, does not have the right to review individual requests in the form submitted, make a determination, and seal that in our public.
That, that is...
I'd like an opinion in writing from legal, and I'll make that as a motion, that as the appointing authority and by policy, can we not review the information when we take a vote to approve or deny a reasonable accommodation?
So there's a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second for discussion, because I know other people are scrambling to get their mic turned back on. You realize that that would be only available soon, probably the soonest for the next meeting?
That's fine, and we can move the discussion in public as well, but I think a reasonable accommodation under the new reopening plan might be, unless we're, we're to do something differently by federal law on the childcare and the family member, the reasonable accommodation may be, we don't have one. We're going to relieve the house. And I think, and I think that people need to hear that. Point of order, Mr. Chairman, I'm just, I'm just a potential.
Mr. Chairman?
Hold on a second. Are y'all set for a second, Tim?
You have a point of order.
Who is the point of order from?
Josh.
Josh, okay, go, Josh.
I'm seeing a lot of comments for staff that are ordering on unprofessional in the chat. And I'd, I'd suggest to them that if they were to make that comment there, that they should also voice it to the superintendent. If they don't like a decision that the board has made, they're welcome to submit a letter of resignation.
Joel, you wanted to say something? No? I thought that was...
I'm off that.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, which is to get a legal opinion regarding reviewing of those considerations. Any discussion, other discussion on that motion? Not hearing any. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
I'm going to say no.
Stands opposed. Did, did you find your error with all of your numbers?
I didn't.
Because seven, nine, and four.
Yep. It's actually...
Which only came up to 20.
Actually, it's, it's 10, 10, and six.
10, 10, 6. Hey, look at that. 10, 10, 6.
Yep, and a couple of those are in more than one column.
Right. But I, I think, Tim, to follow what you said, based upon our reopening plan, there's three, or was it listed in there? We have FLMA, we have an additional...
FICRA.
FICRA, which is additional two weeks on top of that of pay...
No, actually, they're, they're both 12 weeks total. It just, the FICRA gives accommodations for paid leave for childcare.
Yeah.
Or paid leave for COVID care, which do not fall on, childcare does not fall under FMLA, and FMLA is unpaid leave.
And there's also the American Disabilities Act.
Well, the American Disabilities Act would qualify them for FMLA. They can use any accrued time concurrently, but it does not make it paid leave.
I, I agree.
Right.
There's certain aspects that we're going to be required by some of the law to pay, and we don't have to create a reasonable combination if we don't have, this is the formal term that...
That is correct. What I would say is that if we're going to be bringing students back, particularly in full, and I am then losing potentially instructional staff, and I'm going to be paying them to be home and then have to fill those positions as well, that may be, that may not be financially the easiest route to go, but we can look at the numbers.
So how, but how are we going to, if we have, say, let's choose a number of 10 teachers?
Okay.
Even though we, it's...
They're not all teachers, but yeah.
Either way.
Okay.
That can't come back for various reasons. Isn't our responsibility, if, if this is the plan and we're moving forward on the 9th to be in person, how can we accomplish that educationally if the teacher's not there? Because the teacher also is supplying, you have paras in the classroom, you have teachers in the classroom, the kids are in the classroom, maybe not all of them, you might have 80%, but there's a supervisory aspect to that, plus educational aspect. How are we able, going to provide that if the teacher is not there?
Well, if a teacher is able to remote in, while there's not the same supervisory aspect that you would have if someone's in the room, you would have the instructional aspect that you don't have with just a substitute. And right now, I don't have a particularly robust substitute list. And if I have a para or paras in the room, I would have adult supervision in the room, as long as it's not a one-on-one para. If it's a classroom para, they could act as the substitute, but we would still then have the instructional piece as opposed to just, we're going to muddle through. Because while some substitutes are exceptional in being able to deliver instruction, they are...
It's not what they do every day.
Right. Right. They're the placeholders.
Depending, depending on how...
And three, three months of placeholders, a lot.
So if we have, say, I mean, this is a scenario that somebody would have to feel comfortable with. The teacher's going to remote in if, if we allow it. We might have a para in there for us one-on-one. We might have another para that's an additional thing. So, I mean, typically in a classroom, what, what do we have for, typically, do we have one, average one para per classroom? We have an average of two paras per classroom? I mean, this gets in a lot of scenarios here that we would still have to backfill some supervisory...
We would have to backfill adults. Yes, we would. Yes, we would. And there's no question there. And, and it's going to be some Tetris to figure that piece out. For us to do, we don't have paras assigned to every classroom, and as you get further up the ranks, we have fewer paras. At the high school level, most of the paras are one-on-one. They, or they are assigned to a lab. They're not just classroom paras that, that float.
Specific duties.
For the lower elementary, you may have a classroom para that is there to work with, yes, these students, but will also be available to other students. A one-on-one para cannot be used as a substitute by state law unless that para's student is absent, because the IEP requires that that student has the one-to-one services.
So I'm going to throw another monkey wrench in this discussion. Based upon the change in... Based upon the change in direction from the board tonight, being back in school full on the ninth, is this list going to grow or shrink?
I don't know.
I mean, and...
We haven't had an opportunity to talk to the union yet.
What is our requirement to make this decision regarding that? Are we, we need to make that decision tonight? Or should this decision be made next week after this goes back out? Because there may be subtractions or additions? Or the board's just going to make a decision regardless of the change? I mean, I mean, if it's not going to, if you don't think it's substantially going to change, it may not. I mean...
I don't know. I think the number of people who have childcare issues is not going to change substantially, although there may be a few more who are still getting me paperwork because there is a form that they need to fill out for that as well. There, as far as those who are looking at specific accommodations, I mean, some, it's come back, yep. I need to be masked, and I need the kids to be masked. As long as that's the case, we're fine, okay? But I have some who have fairly significant diagnoses that, and and what I get back from the doctor, I'm not required under ADA and FMLA to have all of the detail. It's if the doctor says, this is, you know, I'm saying the accommodation that's needed is, they need to work remotely, then I have a doctor that says, they say that has to work remotely. So we either have to say, yes, we're going to allow that, or the accommodation is under FMLA or under FICRA, and that's what we have.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Tim.
One of the suggestions that I read in the state guidance, and this is done by law enforcement, firefighters across the country, is it suggests that districts work together to come across or fix shortfalls. And I'm wondering if any of those discussions have been opened up with superintendents? And if they haven't, I'm wondering if it would be a good idea to open those up so that if we do get a second wave of the virus, we're sharing resources where we may have, majority of our teachers as math teachers, Governor Wentworth may have, English teachers, we may be able to come up with a mutually agreeable agreement. Or may even have to pay for some educational services. But with Vlax, Dan Slams, I think the time to have those discussions, if they haven't been out, is now versus later.
We have had some of those discussions as superintendents, and I've had probably more of them with our closer districts. But that is also subject to wherever things land as far as the CBA. So I haven't gone too far.
And I'm okay with that, but if we don't have teachers available...
Understood, and that's...
That doesn't mean that we can't contract all those services.
Right, and we can, we can do some, you know, I'll take four of yours if you take four of mine, and yes, that can happen.
Right, okay.
But what's the likelihood of those being available? Because if, if we're seeing potentially a shortfall of resources, wouldn't most districts also be seen the same?
It is the reason why a number of your larger districts to our south have gone remote when their initial intention was to open, because they didn't have the staffing to do it in-house.
So, Rutella, how much more in this discussion can we have in public?
I don't know that there's a lot more we can have in non-public, but we can...
So what's the board's desire? Table this till next week, deal with it today, in public or non-public?
I think my comments have to be moved to non-public. So I accept all we can say in public.
Non-public is fine with me.
Joel, stand.
Fine.
So we'll table this to a non-public session. What else do we have for business, new business? There's one thing you were going to remind me of, and I can't remember what it was earlier today.
I was going to remind you of.
Yeah, something we came up in discussion trying to be prepared for tonight's meeting, and there was something, oh, it had to be the PLRB hearing?
Okay, yep. And actually, that's...
That's just an update?
Well, and that's not necessarily public, but we can...
But basically, it's been continued?
Yes, yes. So at this point, the hearing has been continued to the 22nd of September, and that's where we are.
Initial paperwork was sent, has been continued by the court's backlog or whatever?
By the PLRB, yes.
Oh, PLRB, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, just wanted to pass that along. Any other business for public?
Don't believe so. I guess the other thing that I would, I do want to ask if you wanted to hear from, you do have reports from your principals and your student services director on what we have done thus far to prepare. Because that was also something that the board had requested.
Did anybody have a chance to review those or have any questions regarding those reports?
And they are prepared to speak to them.
Can I make a comment on that?
Go ahead.
There's a lot of documents that were in the folder today, and I spend the weekend back and forth with them. And then probably 4:00 tonight went in, and there was additional reports that weren't in early, which makes it really difficult to review the material. Policy happens before the meeting, but I need to see it when it doesn't happen all the time. So with that in mind, I'd like to table those till next week, or if somebody feels we're going to be before like that, we'd have to come back on another meeting.
I would agree with that, but I think maybe we want them, those staff, to review those midweek and update them if they did any updates that need to be done to those. Because there might be some additional information that they have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and they could update them for the end of next week.
Okay. Are you, I guess, just to clarify, are you looking for rolling reports now from all administrators each week? And if the answer is yes, I just, I'm wanting to make sure that we're clear.
Right, that was from part of the motion last week.
Okay.
Wouldn't you agree with that, Joel? I believe it was your motion, wasn't it? Or was it my motion, but I don't know.
No, I second it.
I think it was, I think it was your motion, Mr. King. But I don't have a problem with getting a report from the superintendent once a week. As long as we can be affirmed, and I'm sure she'll tell us who will, that, you know, she's bringing forward the communication of the staff. I think reading the report from the superintendent that we get on a Friday night, the Monday meeting is going to be a lot easier than talking about a month, a four, and reading all six multi-page reports.
Understood. We got the message on Thursday night, so...
I think, I think that, yeah, I'm not opposed to that, but I think as long as Rutella has specific content regarding the individuals building issues and those issues for each section, so long as you think if you break them down, you can basically summarize information from each school. But, you know, it's not all going to be the same, you know?
You would like the Reader's Digest or Cliff version?
That's what Tim's suggesting. I just want to make sure that it's, it's, it's split out for those separate buildings and no separate issues in those buildings. Because it could be totally different between K through six and seven to 12.
And so there's, there's nothing you'd like the administrators to speak to tonight?
I don't. Like I said, I didn't get a chance to review them because I got in there late in my work schedule, so...
So that's why I'm saying if you wanted them to give you kind of the nutshell now, they can, knowing that you haven't had a chance to read them. But that's up to you.
No, I, what's that?
I didn't, I didn't expect these, I, I, why were they tonight with Ellen? Because our normal meeting is August 31st.
No, actually, August 31st, your next normal one would be in September.
No, we made the, no, I understand that. September 1st is the next day, and I made a motion or suggested to Mr. King that he make the meeting August 31st.
Correct.
But I didn't expect administrative reports tonight. Tonight was the first night of updating us on what you were going to be doing between Thursday and today.
Okay.
So they...
Can I have a question, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I guess my question is, we're here tonight, we're meeting. Is there anything from the administrative team that has to be discussed tonight? But we can't wait till next Monday.
That's a good question. Is there something that they feel they need to bring to attention tonight? Feel free, otherwise, we can take them under advisement for next week. I don't know if there was some hotspots that they wanted to address. Diana D'Nado is here with us to address those hotspots.
Just one of them. Thank you, Diana D'Nado, Director of Student Services. Thank you for the opportunity to just review quickly my, my report. A big part of my report was to discuss those small groups that we were being, bringing in, but we don't need to worry about that anymore. The majority of people had responded yes, but we'd had enough no's so that we were able to accommodate those individuals who'd asked to have their children be in school. So we'd kind of resolved those issues that had been, been part of the discussion previously. We do have a requirement based on the emergency order by the governor, number 48, where we need to hold within the first 30 days of students being in the school building, IEP meetings for every special education student. We have sent out surveys to parents. We have about 170 surveys we sent out. We've received 70 back. We've been calling parents, asking that they give us an indication of whether they'd like to hold the meeting within the first 30 days or delay it or not have it at all, which is also an option that the parents can decide to have as well. So please, if you've received this survey, parents out there, and you have not responded, please do so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Tim, go ahead.
I don't want to, I don't want to interrupt any of our individually, but can we make sure on the data timelines that Diana has to comply with on the special ed, that we put a phone call out to our parents, that that information's out there, where to find it, and how to get it in sort of...
Are we doing that now?
I'm sorry, could you clarify a little bit? We've put out a survey to parents. They received an email, and they also received a phone call, and we are following up with a second round of calls from our offices.
Okay, perfect. With that, Mr. Chairman, I have a second question.
Go ahead.
As we get closer to reopening, I know a certain amount of our students have an SAU email. And the lower grades, probably for long, it doesn't exist.
Nope, they do.
They do.
Yes.
So every student from grade K through 12 now has an email address?
Every student grades K through 12 has an SAU account. We don't necessarily use the email part with the lower grades, but that will certainly during remote instruction is needed. We haven't said, okay, kindergarteners, let's start using your email. But there is an email account that is attached to each of those SAU accounts.
And is that how you're going to be transmitting some of the educational content or requirements to the students?
Google Classroom is attached to that account. We have been using the accounts that parents have provided us with. But certainly at the point that we are sending out blasts once the school year has started, I can include those student accounts on those as well.
Can I, can I follow up on my, my process?
Go ahead.
I think we're in a situation where essentially we're going to open. We have to communicate with the public. We're seeing surveys with X amount of responses, but our percentage of our student population. I guess my question is, I have an SAU email. I've got it on my laptop, I've got it on my cell phone. Is it possible to roll it out district-wide? So parents K through six or above, yeah, the student can have their emails, but so can the parent, and just restrict it to communicating within a district like it, like it used to be?
I, in order to do that, and right now, student accounts don't necessarily go outside the district anyway. For me to provide parent accounts for that...
I'm saying that.
Okay.
A student account that a parent can access.
Well, if, we are providing parents with their student's account information, particularly for those lower grades. But if I give a student account to parents that's just open to parents to use, that also then gives parents the ability to communicate with students, which causes other issues under our data privacy.
But what you're saying is those student emails accounts for the lower grades that parents have access to for community...
They have, they have access to their accounts to get into Google Classroom and whatnot. And there is an account that's attached to it.
Okay. Does that address your concern?
I'll tell the district if I send my daughter an email on our SAU account, she's not going to get that email?
If you send, if, if you send an email to her SAU account from your SAU account, yes, she would receive it.
Outside, outside the SAU. If I have a Gmail account, I email my daughter on her SAU account, she's not going to get that email?
She will get that email. Tim, I would prefer to discuss the rest of this not in public?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Anything else under new business? I'll make a motion to go in a non-public session in RSA 91A3.
Run out of public participation.
Okay, do we have any? Go ahead. Please state your name and let us know. Go ahead.
Hey, Charlie, it's Penny.
Okay, go ahead, Penny.
I wanted to ask one of the questions that I heard on the chatter here is, if we go back to remote or hybrid, will the school board be completely in session?
That's a good question.
I would say that, Mr. King, is that good?
Go ahead, Josh.
I would say that if, if the schools are, schools are in session, then the board should be able to go to meetings whenever possible, in person, barring any ADA or issues.
Can you expand on that a little bit, ADA issues?
Yeah, sure. If somebody is high-risk or has any health issues that would prohibit them from attending meetings, then that person should not be forced to attend.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Now, if, Rutella, if we enact this Level 4 with restrictions, are we still operating under the emergency main designation based upon COVID-19 exposure, based upon orders of the governor?
We have, right now, we have the option to do so, but we are not required to do so.
Okay.
So at this point, because we are not limited to, we're limited to the capacity of the room, but we are not...
So this is the pretense that we're here in a physical quorum, which is waived under emergency orders by the governor?
Correct. So if, if we do not post the emergency designation, you must have a physical quorum of three members present in the room.
Now, that emergency order is still in existence by the governor?
Yes, it is.
And when does he plan to remove that?
He's not giving me that information. He really hasn't.
But, so school boards across the...
School boards have the option to do so, but they are at this point not required to do so because other latitudes have been relaxed.
Okay.
Can I make a comment as well?
Go ahead.
When we first went into this, one of the discussions or odd discussions that I had, is in government management, you never want to potentially put a quorum into a role where there's the least amount of the council can do. And do I feel as, our, our, our schools are going to be safe? Yes. An example of what I'm talking about is the three of us get on a plane and fly to Washington DC for a training. That's just bad management practice. So I think, you know, I think as we move on, and I think this is going to be a fluid situation, hopefully, it's going to be the possible wrong cases. But I think we cross those decisions step by step.
I mean, at this point, if we're opening on the ninth, and I know there's a few schools opening on the ninth, and based upon concerns, I'm hoping that we're able to stay open. But if we're not able to stay open, it's going to be for specific reasons of infection rate, either here or in neighboring communities. So at that point, it would be a bigger concern. Any other public comment?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go, yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Heather. I'm a teacher. Could you just please clarify, if someone has submitted an accommodation, a request for accommodations to be made, can you clarify when the decisions will be made on that? I'm just trying to, it's hard to follow all of them.
Well, we've had some discussion in public, and we've continued the rest of the discussion for non-public. Is, is the decision going to be made? I don't know. At this point, was it going to be made tonight or not? I mean, I posed the question with Ruth Ellen, are we, are we going to have a change in this list based upon us opening on the ninth? She feels it may not be significant, so.
But I, I, I don't know that for sure.
You don't know.
I don't know.
So at this point, the discussion we've had, or the board felt it could have, we've had it in public, as far as the scenarios that we have, I mean, we have, can, depending, I mean, the board could consider all or none, or some, right? I mean, typically, what have other districts been doing?
Well, typically, number one, it's the superintendent's purview.
Yeah.
Number two, they have looked at the buckets that those fall into and said, this is, for this situation, this is the accommodation, this situation, this is the accommodation.
Right.
Where there's been some flexibility, you know, whether we look at job shares, whether we look at those sorts of things, that would be something that we might want to discuss as a board, but.
So have you followed any decisions by other districts and where they have weighed in on this, or that may not be public?
I have. We, we can talk, not all of those decisions are public, there's been a lot of.
Have they?
Superintendent discussions.
Have, have they typically gone all or nothing? Or they have said, you know, on these personal health issues, it's one accommodation, for health of others, it's another accommodation, for childcare, it's another accommodation?
I would say that's probably closer to where things have fallen.
Okay.
But.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Tim.
Can we agree as a board that once we have a decision, that the superintendent will communicate with her staff, both on this and any negotiations that are done on the demand as well? I think, you know, a lot of times, we know what's going on, we want to know in public with the staff, and I think they have a right to know. And as soon as we can get information, I think we should direct them on public, what information, if any, that the superintendent has to release to staff. So I think that's a legitimate, legitimate question from the authority.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. I misunderstood the first part of your question, your first part of your statement, so, okay.
Any other questions or comments?
There's one in here that if I can clarify, someone was asking the survey that Mrs. Dino was discussing, that was a survey that was specifically sent to special education parents regarding those beginning-of-year required meetings that need to happen. So if you're not a, if you're not the parent or guardian of a special education student, you didn't get that survey and you weren't supposed to, so that's okay.
This is, this is one?
Yes.
There was, there was an email, a phone call allowed tonight to parents on the pre-school registration forms are available up online.
Yes.
If you have parents on here, or actually at the D, so, you know, if they missed the call and they missed the email, they know they'll look as well.
Right, and I, I did mention that earlier. Those are available on the front of our website. If, for some reason, you didn't get the email, there is a link to that on, it's on the front page of the S A U website. It says back to school forms.
So that's S A U 61.org for the people that don't know?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing no further public comment, I'll make a motion to go in a 91A RSA, colon, 32A B C and personnel.
One second.
Second by Tim. Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion, all is baver. Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.